December 9th, 2014, I believe it might be our last work session of this particular commission. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Mum?
Here.
Commissioner Pauli?
Commissioner Ross?
Commissioner.
Mayor Neely?
Here.
Any future items for a study session during this commission period?
No.
I think you're good, thank you.
Okay, very good. We'll proceed on to the item, the item, the library addition design update. I understand that you've spoken to many groups since we've seen you last and we'd be really anxious to hear about it, so. Maureen, call.
Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you for having us here tonight. So what we would like to do tonight is update you on what work has been done since you approved the two-story addition on October 15th and kind of fill you in on the process that will be coming up and also get your feedback and your comments and anything you can think of on our work to date. So with that, I would like to introduce our two architects, Joan Jasper and Sid Scott. And just so you know, Charlie Baum and our project managers in the audience. Hi, Charlie. So the team is assembled.
Yay.
And ready to go.
And ready to go.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for having us.
It was again, introduce yourself as you speak, please.
Joan Jasper with Scott Edwards Architecture, nice to be here again, thank you for having us.
Sid Scott, Scott Edwards Architecture. Do you need our address when we're?
No.
Because I'd have to think, no, I do. So yes, we are delighted to be here. Update on the project, since we last met, we got the direction on the two-story option, keep as much of the park intact as possible, and we have moved forward from there. So tonight, we've got two options to show you. They're similar in terms of where they're located based on our prior direction. And just as a little background, we have met with, let's see, we've met with the McLaughlin neighborhood and they were with the same thing you're going to see tonight.
We had an open house?
We had a community open house, Friends of the Library.
And McLaughlin Neighborhood Association? And the HRB.
No, well, and Parks. Parks and Parks. Yeah, and we're going to HRB next Monday. We've been back to them since we've talked to you, but they haven't seen this. They just kind of got the update on the two-story thing. So we'll see them next Monday.
It's been good. So the reaction, and we'll see what you think, has been, I think, very positive. And I know there was a favorite out of the two options that really came out of it. People liked them both, and I think more it was how soon can it be built was really the question that we got. So we'll run through these with you and fire away with questions as we go. So head to the first slide.
All right. As Sid said, you know, we've been the kind of architectural and engineering team along with the library building team has really set the task to build, you know, to design the two-story, as Sid said, to preserve as much of the park and with input from McLaughlin, the Spray Park is there to stay. And we have, we went back to PrAC because when we started studying the swing and slide, it really is where the new entry to the library wants to be tasked with the two-story library, the library, we're trying to keep a very tight consolidated service point and entry point so that it can be staffed with the current staff. And so that's what we're looking at. And what we were thinking is, given the existing Carnegie and the Spray Park, is to really create a civic plaza, a really entry plaza to the library which will be in the new addition. And we touched on that with HRB, we've touched on that with, or more than touched on it with McLaughlin, and the primary entry will be in the new addition with the secondary entry if you so choose through the existing Carnegie. So that's pretty much our criteria.
So with this, oh, I'm sorry.
You've got two options, I think.
We have two options.
Yeah, we've got two options.
I know, but I just want to ask a question.
Yep, fire away.
This all, this option right here will, will take the slide away.
It does.
And the swing set, it can't be moved.
It really, it's relocated.
Relocated.
Both of these.
If you look maybe up by the big tree, it's still there.
Right. So if you look at the overall site, really the intent was, you know, we've got the two-story addition on the back of the building as we've talked about. As Joan was saying, we really feel strongly that the entry to the library needs to come in in the middle to create a hub here for planning, and we'll see that in the floor plan, how that works. So really, the goal was keep as much of the canopy as we can. We're keeping the play amenities here. Now, the idea with the Spray Park is to take and really enhances, so it's more of a year-round space. So the idea is to landscape around it, create some additional benches, and really turn it into something that we think could be used year-round. Because you go out there this time of year, it's just a big, you know, round concrete piece. So let's get some activity out there. So in addition to that comes the idea that can we really create a, make this into a bigger civic plaza? And we think that that is, you know, it really would be an amenity to this project. So the idea here is, is we're keeping the Spray Park, enhancing that. The slide and swing which are currently located here, we're in direct line of really creating a strong entry and also an accessible entry from Sixth into the building. So the idea here is we're creating a plaza, relocating the slide and the swing over here. Now, they may be new, we're not sure if they can, if those specific ones can, that's a question.
That was my next question.
And, and we don't know the answer to that one. It's really going to be a, you know, are, can we relocate them if they're not code-compliant and those kind of things? And that's something we'll be working with the Parks folks on.
Yeah. That was my other question.
And that.
Because I don't think they would.
And that was one of the.
They're up to code.
Yeah, that was one of the main reasons to meet with PrAC as well as M&amp;A because we real, our, our recommendation was to relocate them because you can't get accessibility and you can't really get good ADA parking access, drop off, that kind of thing, if the slide and swing remained. You basically have a barrier along that.
So, and Scott can speak more to this, but just to cut right to the chase on the park thing, PrAC did move to accept both of these.
Okay.
Upon the condition that we equal or increase the plague capacity. Not that these have to be the same or anything.
Right.
But that we equal or exceed the capacity. So they saw that and they were fine with this idea.
Scott, do you want to talk about any of that at this point?
I think, I think Maureen just, just captured it pretty well there. I'd be happy to answer any questions on behalf of PrAC if the commission has any, but that's, that's pretty much what it boiled down to.
Yeah, I have a quick question.
Go ahead, sorry.
Okay. So when they were talking about to have the same capacity or more, were they talking about maybe a different play structure configuration? Maybe one of those little structures that has the slide and other things? Was that mentioned?
They didn't get into designing it per se and talking that specifically, but I, I think the concept was that it would, the understanding was that, working with Maureen and, and the project team and our staff, that we would be able to come up with something that would be, you know, at least equivalent or as, as Mo said, that would exceed the, the amount of playability is kind of the, you know, it's not really a, an official technical word, but we'll, we'll say that it is.
Sounds official, though.
So they were just supportive and understood that that was the, that was the, you know, if you will, their, their, their wish, so.
Do you have a, I attended the, that part of the PrAC meeting where they talked about the library. Is there another slide of this?
Of the existing?
Of this, of this configuration? I don't know.
We have option two, but option one and option two really do.
No, 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 I'm not talking about another side of it. Because I believe Denise Kayshme then showed a diagram or something of that nature, and that's not presented here, is that right?
We, we have it with us, we're not presenting it.
Okay, what I wanted to make, one of the, I think one of the issues with the, with the size of this equipment was the space, as I understood, required around it.
Yeah. Yeah.
And that was, and, and I think in that presentation, she was indicating that was pretty tight. She also indicated that somebody looked at the possibility of moving it, and they said that it would be really problematic. But I don't think it was an engineer or something, I think she was mentioning that somebody else could look at that possibility when it was decided. But it seemed to me in the slide that she showed, and maybe, maybe she's indicating the space here, but the slide, slide that she saw that space around those structures had to be a certain size.
I don't think it's showing on your screen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so you can see, based on this idea of having an access from Sixth, that the play structure or the slide and the swing are, they'd be right at the front door.
And, and we also, you know, we talked to both the contractor and our civil, to keep that existing curb and sidewalk, we'd probably have to rebuild it, just with all the kind of regrading and excavation that would go on, so. And then this was just a quick view of what that would look like. But that, that did deal with, that did deal with the clearances of that. And then this, oops.
Back to the beginning?
Oh, no, it's, let's see, hold on, I think it's a function of aid issue.
Close your eyes, you're not supposed to see this part.
Pretend you saw nothing.
We saw nothing. You saw nothing.
We won't remember it.
We won't remember it anyway.
You've got those little zappers from that, what's the movie where they zap?
Please strike that from the record.
Yeah.
See if this one, there we go. Oops, see, now it's, you're seeing what I'm seeing and you're not supposed to see that either.
Well, while you're figuring that out, I can just say, I think once you remove the slide, I don't think you're going to be able to put it back. And to tell you the truth, I'm okay with that, but a lot of people will not.
You know, this will be a discussion point as we go on. We'll avoid that if we can, though.
Yeah, we'll do everything we can to put it, put the same thing back.
Yeah.
Something always happens.
But we'll just have to see as we get into it.
Yeah, I think it is really important to create that entry way, though, and make it really accessible.
I agree.
And something's got to give.
Turn it off for just a sec on the screen.
Let me just try this. Let me just try a five and that might do it.
Click right, just go all the way back.
Okay. Yeah, sorry about that.
You're back in business.
Let's see.
We're almost ready. I think we're ready.
We're watching it on here, anyway.
See, I just, that's what it was on before, I just, here, let's try this one.
Where's the start button?
No, reset.
Okay. There you go. Okay, all right, sorry about that, guys.
Should've worked on our puppet show we do in between.
All right.
Go back to the site plan. So just to finish up on the site plan, so good discussion on the play area, our intent is that we will.
I think that's the wrong thing. This is, oh, no. Five. So that was the, I do not know what's going, I am really sorry, guys.
Always use the PDF that Katie has downloaded already.
Can you just advance that one?
Okay.
Great.
Great, all right, got it now.
Got you anything.
Go back to the site plan.
Okay.
There we go.
Sorry.
Back to it. So we will, we will not accept any more derailing questions.
Yeah. There you go.
Like it's hair falls.
So the idea with this, again, that idea of the plaza, creating some steps, so we really see it as a civic space, so you can imagine folks sitting out there in the summertime on the steps, the kids playing, or there's some kind of festival going on, so there's, there's a lot of potential with that play area out there. And then the other part of it is, is really creating a front porch or a community porch and as a way to draw folks to the entry. So whether you're on John Adams, or you're on Sixth, or on Seventh, there is a way into the building and it's very clear. So that's the idea in terms of the overall planning, and that really is applicable to both options we're showing. The difference between them really is how they address the existing Carnegie and the kind of interior spaces that they use. This one is slightly offset and not totally symmetrical, and you'll see that in the plan here in a minute, how that works. So let's, let's go ahead and go to the plan, Joan, and then you can walk through the diagram.
Okay, so again, here's kind of our entry porch, kind of bringing out these canopies, we're doing it in both schemes to really kind of draw the entry out to the perimeter since the building does kind of, both buildings sit in an island. Kind of with the kind of central entries here and here, people will be able to come from Seventh, kind of all along Sixth and of course John Adams. But what it does is it brings, it creates kind of a central atrium and service point so that you can really kind of control and monitor the library with a minimum of staff. One of the big commitments from the library building team and especially the librarians as long, along with McLaughlin, is to really make sure that the Carnegie stays viable, not, you know, relegated to like a meeting room or something that people would only, you know, frequent on occasion. So really local history, periodicals, new materials in here, kind of with, kind of the internet hub, you know, kind of in between children's and then community rooms flanked with reading areas, you know, stair, elevator up and an overlook, you know, above. And then the more quiet sections would be the fiction, nonfiction, that would be upstairs along with some training, conference rooms, study alcoves and office. And these are preliminary, you know, so things will move around a little bit, but again, everything really kind of off of a central hub. And the one thing you'll see in the sketch-ups, and we looked at two, is how, how we're engaging with the Carnegie. So in the atrium scheme, this is kind of a tall space and kind of, kind of hugs the whole backside where in option two, it'll come in a little bit lower. So that's kind of the different flavor of those. So here's a view from John Adams and Sixth. These are, these little, these are water, we're saying this is summer, you know, the Splash Park is, is up and running and active. What we are looking at is that idea of, you know, creating landscape, maybe some more comfortable and, and more engaging seat, seat walls, you know, where people could congregate, they could get shade.
Yeah.
And it also then in the non-summer months really lets you kind of cross that, use that as a cross path on your way, you know, to the library and through. All right, so this is kind of off of Sixth. You're seeing the Spray Park here, you know, and again, kind of the spirit of the existing playground there and our entry porch here into where it engages with the Carnegie.
You'll see from that as well, the entry area, and as Joan was pointing out, the entry is a higher space, so the glass area is actually going above the Carnegie. If you look at the front porch coming in and then that area that's directly behind it. And so you'll see that in a second, how that works. But really, we wanted to look at all of these ideas, both ideas you see tonight, is how can we really respect, engage with the Carnegie and, and really celebrate it? And so we wanted to make sure that the, the solution is to let the building be expressive on all sides. Yes?
Thanks for putting the brick in there.
That's helpful.
Yeah, looks a lot better.
Well, we're thinking white building and then everybody's like, yeah, I don't think a white building, so.
Yeah, because at the Friends of the, or you can see, Library Lunch, and it was white, and I mentioned that people might have a misperception that, so I, I love how that ties.
Listen to that.
How that ties in.
Yes.
And the crown on the top, to me mimics the columns and the crown that the Carnegie has, so I think that's great. So I, I know this is a minor thing, but what is the deal with the wall behind the slide?
Right here?
That for the garbage?
Service area.
It's a service area, and we're actually, that's kind of our immediate point of study. We're getting ready to submit our drawings for the pre-app, you know, and, and trying, you know, really trying to kind of hide that as much as possible. It's a four-sided building, we've got a lot of slope, there's not a lot of places it can go, so we're looking at that. The courier service for the library, the library building team's very comfortable, it will come right through the front door and into the, right now, the sorting area will be kind of right in there, that could change.
To be determined.
To be determined, but that it's, it's still, it comes in before the library's open and people are pretty comfortable with that.
The other thing to notice here, you'll see, and this is fairly accurate, that the grade, if you're on Sixth and the sidewalk, it is essentially flat into the building from there, which will make, you know, the accessibility is really wonderful from this side. And then the second thing I'd mentioned in the plan, we have the children's area currently located on the ground floor in this corner. So the idea of the visibility to the play area and so that there's some synergy created between those two activities.
I'm going to ask a question. This entry, while you were talking about bringing the books and everything into that particular area, when they're distributed out from this area to other libraries or however they're taken out, can a vehicle move back into here to pick up the books? So they'd be wheeled out to a vehicle?
They'd be wheeled.
Okay.
And that works?
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
I mean, it could be, I mean, it's wide enough to handle it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, up until you got to the canopy, you know, whether the city would allow that or, you know, those are.
I guess, but, yeah, I mean, compared to like going up steps, which is what they do now, you know, anything is easier, so.
So it makes it very accessible. And again, I think in, in both the options, so you see, from an exterior standpoint, is really the idea of getting the flavor of the Carnegie. So from a massing standpoint, we're using similar vocabulary and, you know, looking for those kind of things to tie in.
And I'm sure you guys have thought of this, but I just have to say it, in the summertime, they're going to be playing in the Spray Park, and then they're going to want to go into the library in their wet suits.
Yes.
We've talked about this.
And go to the potty and all that kind of stuff. So I'm sure you guys have dealt with that in some fashion, right?
That's our, that's probably one of our, I mean, everything wants, it's always the case, everything wants to be at the front door.
Right.
Everything.
Everything.
I mean, the glossy children's library, the restrooms, the unsexy book sorter, you know, all that kind of good stuff, but that's, you know.
Yeah, we actually were kicking around a little bit of the idea, you know, that currently you can go down the steps and the restrooms are right below, so there may be some way to utilize those for that purpose.
Yeah, the, you know, this, this, every time.
We've been discussing this, and Mo kind of like holds her head, actually.
That's that floor that I don't want to staff, right?
Right.
There's restrooms there, but I don't want staff to have to have anything to do with that floor.
Right, right.
So it comes up and I shoot darts and we'll, we'll figure it out.
Too bad there is not some connection you can make at the children's park, they're the top park, that has restrooms, but unfortunately, there's a busy corner.
All the way across the street, yeah.
Right, right.
We actually upgraded those, though.
But anyway, but yeah, but we are, we have thought of that.
We're looking into the possibility of a very historically correct porta potty to put right out.
I have not.
You guys have to stick on the same line, yeah.
You could put little pillars and make the little crown.
See, it's not permit.
Okay, so let's.
That would require you putting in a subsea tank under it, so you're not going to do that.
Yeah, that's not going to happen.
And it takes up park air. So here's just the view, you know, again, kind of from Seventh Street in the tree canopy.
Is the front steps, and you're not going to go through those anymore, is that correct?
Yes, well, we're, we're actually going to rebuild those so that they are code-compliance stair, and then it will be considered as a second exit to, or entry into the building. So depending on.
But not ADA accessible.
Yeah. So this is not the primary entry, we would not have to do the ramps and all that stuff that we've been through.
What we're really hoping, and we don't know yet, is to create an accessible ramp, you know, around the Spray Park, you know, to that as well, so you could basically avoid the stairs, you know, if you were coming, say, from this corner.
Oh, yeah, on the, in the plaza area.
Yeah, but you know, the grades are, it's interesting, you know, that it kind of sits, you know, it sits in this little bathtub kind of thing, so, but in earnest, we're starting that because the footprints are so similar between.
I might make a comment at that point on the ramp, I mean, I think it's fine to consider it, but actually, when the re, when the remodel was done, I should say the restoration as opposed to a remodel, the issue of the ramp came up, whether it should be in the front, and we actually had Jerry Ryan, who's a quarter, most of us, I think, if not all of us are aware of him, come in, and his statement was that you should, you should actually be true to the structure, that the important thing is you, you have good accessibility to the structure at a given place, but he did not have any issue himself about not having the ramp in front when we did the restoration.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Okay. A couple of interior shots of this one, so looking at that two-story space, and you can see the stairway open to the community space beyond the two-story overlook from above, and then the back of the Carnegie here, and really the idea with this one is having the roof elevate above the existing Carnegie so you see the full wall back there.
And it looks like you can also see it from the second floor.
And you very much can, yes.
Yeah, I think that's great.
So, and that is the case in both options, we think that is a, you know, really, really important feature.
So we're, we're taking the existing windows here, just kind of taking out the brick below, you know, this could be a colonnade, you can kind of peek in, it could be either, you could put historic windows back in or like a glass barrier, or it could just be open, you know, these are all things that we'll develop. But one of the things in both of them is we want, when you're inside, to feel like it's just, it's one big library.
Right.
And not that there was an addition, so.
If the intent is, I mean, if, if the best plan is to remove the windows, I would make a request. Any of those panes that are wavy in the front and the side, take those and replace the ones that aren't wavy with the wavy.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Boy, you know, people, people really can, even people that don't know that much about the history of a building, pick onto wavy glass, gives an indication how, you know, old some of this stuff is.
That's a cool idea. Joan was just pointing out, those are high enough, you could actually leave those windows in.
And go underneath.
And just, they, you know, cap the portal.
Yeah.
Which would be kind of a, neat idea.
That would be cool.
I, I, I think it might be the most preferable option.
Yeah.
Then you don't have to shift panes around.
We'll get those back in tomorrow. So again, this is like the, the atrium, like Bird's Nest or Treehouse, you know, we've got a skylight here, you know, we're, we're trying, we're looking at different sections, you know, to keep the height of the building, you know, lower yet still, you know, the space is feeling proportionate, but, so here, you're kind of up and, you know, in the trees, and then again, seeing the Carnegie below here. All right, so this is option two, we call this the overlook. Sid, do you want to talk a little bit about, again?
Yeah, so site plan, same idea, exactly the same idea. And the, really the difference with this one is, it is totally symmetrical about the existing library. It is, it, entry idea is the same, but when you look at how this is layered and how I think, like to think about it is, you know, we have a brick building here, this entry section here is down lower, and you'll see that in a minute. And then this piece is a two-story glass space. And the brick building then really is back here, so there's these layers of brick building, glass separating, and then the brick building again. And the, very much the same idea, creating a two-story space, something that's very engaging, and we think in both cases, wherever you are inside that, the, the new part, we want to be able to see the old part so that there is always this connection to it and, you know, really celebrating it.
So the plan, you know, again, we kind of have, you know, the entries are the same, again, kind of from a functional standpoint, stair, service point here, children's, community, but you can see this is that two-story glass space, and on the upper level is where the overlook comes in. So we have these balconies, they could be either open or glazed in, you know, just depending on how we, how the plan develops, but it's really overlooking into the lower space and then overlooking into the park and to the Carnegie.
One other thing I wanted to mention, and this is true in both cases, is, and we have not at all really addressed the Jefferson side of the building yet, but one thing that we'd love to do, and you can see this here, where we've taken really the idea of just extruding the existing Carnegie right through the new part, so that there is something that happens on Jefferson that totally relates to the Carnegie. So, and what that is yet, we don't know, but that's something we really want to incorporate whatever direction we go with this.
And we're really kind of seeing it maybe in a large bay window, you know, this yellow could move out to here, be the teens area. We're pretty, we're. We're pretty, we're pretty substantially below grade, you know, at the lower level, but then you're in a wonderful, you know, it's kind of a split level on the back of Jefferson, so...
So, again, very similar kind of idea. The other thing that we should mention, and this is true in both cases, but the community room, we really wanna set that up so those can be used after hours, so evenings, weekends, holidays, whatever the case may be. So in this case, where it would have a really nice breakout space in front of it, this two-story space here, you could enter from this side of the building, community room there, and then have access to restrooms that would be in this core area. So all of that could be closed off, and that is applicable to both ideas. We think that's a really important feature to have, and really making it more multi-service-oriented, multitasking.
So then this is, you know, same views, kinda set up the same views, this is just option two, you're seeing the, the glass wall behind here, spray park again, you know, and the plaza.
You see, I mean, the real difference in terms of the buildings themselves is, the first option is more of a solid base, and so it would pick up proportionally similar to what the existing building is, but creating a solid base with, with openings in it, where the up, upper part of the first option is really an idea of all glass up there, so a clear story going all the way around. This one is more of an idea of creating that two-story glass space that interacts with all of the spaces, and, um, is, and then the rest of the building would be more solid behind that. So the glassy part is on that, the two-story area.
So it's kinda like there's this brick bar behind kind of this glass atrium or overlook, you know, and so these notch in, kind of like the masonry style of the Carnegie, you know, that these windows poke out between these kind of pilasters.
I wanted, I wanted to make sure I understood something. When you're talking about the community room having access, it's not clear from the picture I'm seeing here, that access is from the atrium, that's not doorways going to the outside.
Yeah, well, there would be doors from the outside as well.
Oh, is that right?
Yes.
So where there'll be a ramp, will it be ADA accessible for after-hours?
Yes, yeah.
Now, it just strikes me, the more entry ways you have coming in, the more concerns on security might be there.
Well, there would likely only be doors that would be used in, during an event, or when you're gonna use that, so I wouldn't, and that's, I mean, totally up to how...
Having the desk in the center there pretty much takes care of that. We would have gates at both, all doors. We would have, you know, if we do RFID, we'll go ahead and get those gates, so, to help a little bit with theft and stuff, but...
So these two plans are the same square footage, is that correct? Okay, so the other, the first plan is, takes up more, a little more of the park, right? So how, how is the configuration different than first one?
Well, actually, I shouldn't say that. The, the first plan is actually, is, is the first and second level are more equal in square footage, where this one has kind of a smaller square footage on the second floor, larger on the lower floor, so it's a little bit longer, a little bit thinner, just kinda the proportions. But probably aggregate, it's pretty, it's pretty close, and, you know, we're gonna, I mean, we're kinda, we're really committed to making that play area work, and that's kind of the, the number one, so this will kind of shrink, you know, and go up or down. These are all just slightly oversized.
I would just consider them both the same. I mean, that, in the end, we're only, we're gonna build, only build a certain amount of square footage, and so we're gonna balance that.
I think it's really, because, I mean, everybody was surprised, but the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association's, one person, one of you was speaking at one of them, and the other one was speaking to the parks and rec.
Right.
And the anticipation was the neighborhood association, one would go on forever in park and recreation, would get right through it, and it was a switch.
It was a total switch.
You came in, the reason I'm bringing this in, you actually came in and were able to speak.
Yes.
And it sounded like the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association didn't really have that much issue with option one, am I correct on that?
That's correct.
Or two, right?
Or two, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, right.
Yeah, it was...
The point is, the, they were concerned about having that about the same area for, for the play activities, but the, the two options didn't, didn't concern them that much.
Correct, yeah.
It's really been like, you know, fifty, fifty, forty, sixty, you know, people like one, you know, like different aspects of each.
Yeah, I think, you know, in planning, they're very similar. I think architecturally, they're different in terms of how the base of the building is addressed, and I think how they address the existing Carnegie. So, and as I, you know, I was telling Mo, I mean, either one would be awesome, you know, I mean, that's, that's how we think about it. Let's go to the interior of this one, and we just finish this one up.
We just go through, so again, here's the, you know, the view from six, where we're really setting up that entry porch, the plaza, you know, here again, here's this, you know, and all this is, it's got brick on it, but we're still working on it. Here's from seven, so you're seeing that two-story space, right?
This one would set more of a, the other one has a, I would say it's, it's, you know, the, the base of the building is gonna give you more of brick as a backdrop, and this one would be more glass. And so, you know, depending how you view that, you know, it's, those are, I think, significant differences between the two. And so this one too, when we go to the inside, this shows the lower entry, so in this case, the entry would be right over the top of the shelf, and the dentals there are the detail of the back of the, the Carnegie, but it would not go all the way to the top. I mean, it could, but in this version, we're, we're, you're not seeing the very last top of the Carnegie there. And then this shows you the two-story glass space.
So there's those little overlooks, you know, from nonfiction above, stairs going up, you know, and these, these spaces, you know, are full and active, you know, activated on the ground floor.
And then the last one...
There's another one from the second we added, one said...
You did.
We did, I know, 'cause we, we had more purple and green people.
Yeah, we needed more colorful people in there to...
Mayor, do you, do you remember going on that tour, and I think Commissioner Pauley went too?
Yeah.
One of the tours we took was of the library in Vancouver, their newer, newer library. And it had a, a very large glass frontal wall space like this as well. The only reason I'm mentioning that is for those of you who didn't get to go on that tour, if you wanted to go, probably on the, on the Vancouver Library website, you could probably see a picture, they might have a virtual tour or something, and it gives you a real buil, building to look at that has similar features to this.
That's a great point, 'cause it's, you know, it's very similar, this is two-story, theirs is five-story, but very similar kind of idea, and using that as an organizational piece for the library. So here, you can see it from inside like an outside, and, and I think in either option is cool, but, you know, we want to be able to see the Carnegie from all sides, and from when you're inside, the, the new part of the library, you're seeing the old part. And again, I think really celebrating it. So let's go to the, we've got both of these in SketchUp, and I think it would be good to see, you can see them a little differently there, for discussion purposes, and then see what you think.
A few seconds.
Any thoughts so far?
I have a question for our...
Lots. I think we're all writing lists.
Is there a big, okay. Do you need more paper?
No, no, it's okay. I got plenty.
I, I think there's so many things we're gonna have to come back to, and I just wouldn't hold us up on them.
Yeah. Well, let's, we'll go back to the first one and just show the SketchUp model of that, and then maybe you could ask questions, I mean, that might help address them, or you can just go through this.
I'm a miracle worker.
I have a really quick question while we get this light for our library director. Is there a sense from the library board which option they think is more usable and functional?
They will be seeing it tomorrow for the first time.
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry, I can't tell you that.
There we go.
Do you have, are you gonna wait to see what the board says?
Um, well, I have my own opinion, but, you know, I love both of them. I'm a little concerned about noise, but we've, and, and option two, and how that would, like, you know how it overlooks the children's area, for instance? I just wanna be sure that, you know, we could mitigate that appropriately, that's the one thing that worries me. And then, if I had another preference from the inside, I really, really think that the entire back of the Carnegie wall needs to be exposed. So if you could raise that on the second option...
And that works with either one of them, yes, yes.
Then I would be, have an impossible choice to make then, because that...
Okay, we're raising it, so you now have an impossible choice.
'Cause I, I really love that view. That's in the first option, that whole wall.
Yeah, it is cool.
And we can help you with that choice.
You can help me with that choice?
I've got a coin.
Is there, I, I guess, you know, I, I know you wanna show us a couple things, but do we feel comfortable about talking about those two options now, or not?
Yeah.
Well, we were just gonna pull up the SketchUp, and maybe that'll help address some of your questions, that kind of thing, but just quickly, maybe just fly around a little bit here and...
Yeah, just, again, kinda seeing the scenes you've seen before, but...
We're just all so excited about this.
We are.
This is cool.
So, let's see. This one, really like this one, this is that idea of the library plaza, so, you know, this is kind of when you're standing right in front of the Carnegie, you know, and, you know, you're right dead center, but we really, really wanna create that idea of a library plaza, so you know where to go. You know, and this one shows, that's actually, the children's library is a little bit bigger, and so we slid it over a little bit just to kinda gain, even though we might have to slide it back to kinda get the swing and slide and stuff like that.
Some massaging will occur.
You know, but that's kinda, whoa, that's the idea, okay, and then, and then...
Just go up above.
Yeah, I'm just gonna show...
Ooh, cool, cool, cool.
There you go.
So that's a nice overview of how the pieces would go together.
Yeah, that's awesome, right there. Done.
So you can see the massing and how that all works.
That's cool.
So that's number one, and let's, do you have number two?
I do.
Queued up.
I do. I think I need to change the materials or the layers tonight.
Like that one until you show me my next favorite.
And then let's just...
So you can see how the glass space works there, and, yeah, we could certainly raise up that connector part. The other thing I thought would be really, really fun to do with this is, take that, the community porch and that connector piece in there, and do those as green roofs, so that you've got a, the park has come to the roof.
Yeah.
And then when you're on the second floor inside of the addition, and, you know, we've talked about this, looking out over that existing roof, well, how about if it was green, you know, to look through that?
And even, we've even talked about this one, doing the same thing.
Right, so the porch roof and the, and all of that up there. So I think that would be a cool opportunity. Do you wanna go inside of them, or? You know, I think probably good to go down...
Rocky wants it all.
Go down to the front, maybe look at both of them, right, if you're standing right in front, kind of have a backdrop in.
Maureen was just telling me that, Maureen was just telling me that some of the folks, and I think she and I might even think this way, that people tend to like the outside, the look of one from the outside, and the look of the, another one from the inside, and, you know, the trouble is, these are both gonna be really viable choices for you, but it's gonna be, you know, your version of a coin toss, maybe.
I don't know what happened to my person, but anyway, yeah, no, no, I can just go...
Mr. Smith, which one would you like to go in?
What?
Is there one you'd like to go in, over there?
I wanna go right through the front door.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's do it.
All right.
Not that front door.
You can't go through the Carnegie, you can't go through the Carnegie.
Well, they haven't done that.
I knew that. How would I know that?
Where am I?
You asked the impossible.
It better not be impossible, because somebody's gonna do it at one point.
Well, yeah, so just technology.
Hi, Mo. Hello.
I'm sitting out there.
So there it is, back of the Carnegie.
Wow.
No office for you. And this is option one.
This is option two.
Option two.
So it's the glass, the two-story glass.
Now, there might be some holes in some of these models.
So that'll give you an idea of the stair.
And through that, and just through the wall.
There you go.
Okay, I know, I'm sorry, guys.
I think I got a head from that one, that was...
I know, I know.
You're gonna get us dizzy.
Okay, so there you go, that's, that's actually a good, I think, representation of how that two-story space would work.
But what it is...
And almost all of the wall of the existing Carnegie.
Yeah, and, so, in this case, we would raise up that, the roof there, and so that you would see the full back of the Carnegie.
Which will be tricky, 'cause we actually have to cantilever that, you know, we can't really touch, but so here's like, you know, in the children's area, even that it'd be more playful, but that's looking through the porch looking.
Yeah, those look a little stiff for kids, don't they?
Those look like old people chairs, or those look like children's.
I was saying the same thing.
This could sit on floor.
Yeah.
Now, we'll have some very cool kid things. And I think, you know, in this one, or even both, is, is the idea of those, the, the brick entries could be a lot of fun, you know, you could do different things in the children's area on how those are treated. So a lot of, a lot of opportunity, a lot of people with both of them, really.
So that was option two.
This is option two, which is the overlook, so if you can see here, and I'll try to walk you through in the, in the option one, but just because you have that two-story space, the aperture, you know, of your vision is much bigger, you see, you're getting to see more of the Carnegie, you know, while you're still in the building.
That is the really cool thing about this. It's like you look out and you see it right there, the whole thing.
Well, the other, other part is you see the entire park, so you see the plaza when you're on this side, when you're on the other side, you're right in the canopy of the trees. And so really, the idea was that this is making it as transparent as possible, and then have that as the piece that separates the new brick part from the old brick part, so that we're not trying to say, hey, that's just a, you know, part of the old building. This is new, but we're respecting it. Respecting the old building.
So then if we go to option one, and let's see where it'd be best to walk around. All right. Let's see, I think scene four takes me down. So... And, this one's a lot, this one's a lot, this one's a lot harder because again, so you can see from that same view...
So you still have the glass that you...
Oh, yeah. But you, what you don't have is the, the ceiling height.
Oh, right.
You know, to kind of...
And as much glass, so it would be, it's more of a punch, you know, opening idea versus just all glass.
It's like so hard to walk in this one. Let's go back. You can tell, somebody said I drive this somewhat like I've never played video games, which is kind of true. That's all he said.
Well, how about we, as there's questions and thoughts, and then if there's things that we can address with the model, we can move that around for you.
Yeah. Up to six.
I'll start at my right. Rocky? And, and, and we don't feel the need to feel close, somebody wants to fall in right on something you said, that's fine.
Yeah. So we got, when we looked at it, and with our packet, basically, it was without the brick, so that was one big change. So walking in here tonight, I was very much, I think, more excited about option two because of the surface in, in the, at the renderings from what we saw, just not wanting big, solid wall right in front of the, of the building. Seeing it a brick, now I've kinda flipped the other way, but, so I'm, I, I guess I'm along the same realm as everyone else, where I like kinda pieces of both, but, so I can't really pick one or the other, 'cause I think the interior, the interior of two I love, but the exterior of one I love too, so, if you could figure out how to do that, no.
Anything is possible.
I think some of the points that have already been made, I, I think it's gonna be really sad if that front door doesn't open, because that's...
We're definitely planning on the front door being open.
So, I mean, we have to have that front door as one of the doors, even though we want to cut down the amount of doors, I think that main door has to be the, has to be usable.
We totally agree, Rocky.
Um, the, I love, I, the, the, you know, skylight, uh, or the, in the atrium version, kind of to open that whole lower section. I had questions about the, um, entry level, but in the sketchup, it, you could, I could see how the stairs and the ramps all work, so that was interesting, because I was trying to figure out how the, how the two levels, or how each building kind of came together. I think the central hub is really, really good, um, one, because it separates the old and the new with glass, um, in both, both, um, renderings, I think, and then, um, but the point you made about the community room, I think is very important, that, that central, because most of them, it showed kind of open entryways into the Carnegie and open entryways up the stairs, and, um, I think that, as much as we want that to be open during the day, in the evening, that atrium being accessible into that community room, I think is really important, so that there's, can be, um, an event in the com- community room that's en-, you know, that's accessed from that middle kind of entryway, but, but keeps people kind of in there for an event, or something that's a meeting, or whatever, rather than have the whole, um, building open, I think that's important. Yeah, the tall, the, the, um, ability to see that whole back wall of the Carnegie is incredible.
Yes.
Um, especially, um, you know, with that center section lifted up. The... I'm not sure what, I, yeah, I mean, the, the wall with the service road and how that works, you know, maybe it's more, um, rather, because even, well, I'm okay with the brick, I think, on the addition, if there is brick or glass either way, but, but that extra wall, just, you know, whether that's hidden with, um, plantings, or who knows what, there's ways of doing that. The restroom, you know, I'm wondering about, um, part of the reason I think people wouldn't use the restroom at Tot, Tots Park is because of what it looks like. I, I think if we, uh, and this is a whole nother topic, because it's not necessarily connected with, with library, but, um, if we found a way to rebuild a restroom facility in Tots Park, which doesn't take up, you know, park space of a Carnegie, but is, um, something that people would utilize easier, and maybe looks, um, similar to the current, to the new library, we might be able to utilize that space in a, in a better way, or in a different way. It's, I don't know, I mean, it's a, it's a possibility, um, because, and I guess, so yeah, kids running around in and out of the front entrance, wet, dripping all over, I mean, that's gonna happen for sure, even if we do have a restroom.
Can I just add, can you do that real quick, I have the same thought? Because, um, it looks like the, um, play equipment's gonna be a little closer to that sidewalk, so it might actually be more relevant to use the top park, um, restrooms, I mean, that might be, because it's moving it way closer, right, to where it is now, so it'll, it'll be closer. You'll actually see the restrooms, if they're visible, that that's where they are, and that'll keep them out of the library dripping wet, so that's a good idea.
I have a real concern with that, because not all kids are supervised, you're having them run across the street, and some of the kids are pretty young. I think there's a safety issue there that we need to be really cognizant of.
Yeah, that's true.
That is true, it'd have to change, the intersection would have to change somehow.
Uh, I think...
I didn't hear that, make a note of it.
While you're looking there, let's go ahead and bet it, and you, we can all come back to something.
I think both options are great, um, personally, I, I like option one, personally, but I like part of the inside of option two. So, um, but I think you're doing a great job. I can't wait to see the finished product.
Carol?
Um, yes, you guys did a great job on this, I'm so excited, thank you for putting the brick in the rendering. And they see the white, and they'd be like, ah! So, both, I think both options are great, um, when I looked at the floor plans, and, you know, I'm really, I really like the symmetrical, so I thought, oh, okay, option's two, symmetrical, but I feel that option one feels more symmetrical, because you have the heaviness and the weight of the brick on the first level, which really mimics the Carnegie, and I'm gonna talk about the church again, because it's so close, and everybody else talks about it, it's kind of the reference point. Having something that really, really feels like it belongs to the Carnegie, and I think that brick, and then you see the, the windows at the top, and they kind of float, and they take away some of the heaviness, and then you really notice that crown molding, that dental mold, that ties right into the main structure of the building. And I just think that is, is so pretty, and it really, to me, is a beautiful backdrop to the Carnegie. And you see, and then on the inside, um, can we go inside?
Absolutely. Scene four.
And, and then, of course, on the inside, where you see that, the dental mold, and you see the whole entire brick wall, I just think that is beautiful, and that's one of the things I loved about the Library in Hood River.
That's right.
Is where you, you could see that, and that was the Carnegie.
And you're seeing more here than you did in Hood River, I mean, the thing is, you're bringing up the whole of the back of the Carnegie, and I, my recollection of Hood River, you were seeing the brick wall, but I don't think you were catching everything that was originally there.
Well, and I don't think you were far enough away to get the majesticness of it, do you know what I mean, you're like right next to it, this is like really cool.
That's a big part of this, is that it's, you see it in its entirety, you're not just a part of it, but you see the whole thing. So whatever option you end up going with, you're gonna see the whole thing.
And then also, so that kind of finishes the, the whole, um, outside thing, I just, I think option one is just great. And then on the inside, um, the spaces are more square, the rooms are more square, is that correct? As opposed to, can we see that floor plan, the diagram of the floor plan? Yeah, they're more square, and the first one, or the second one, they're longer and skinnier.
Longer and skinnier.
And so I kind of like the flow and the layout of that, too, I, I'm interested to see what the library board says about the interior, because I know that's a consideration, too. Because to me, this, the plans do function a little bit differently for the interior, for the floor.
I think in this one, we will have to scooter over, you know, to be more symmetrical because of the play area.
Now, the other part, too, I'm just, I was listening to the reaction about the two-story space, and I heard that that seems, that's a favorable part of option two. And we could certainly look at how we could do some of that in this option.
Yeah.
You know, it's simply creating connecting space.
Right.
Between the two floors, so, doesn't have to be one option or the other, so it's exactly right, I mean, we're, in the end, you're generally taking pieces from both and putting them together, what are the best things?
Right.
And make those the, the final product.
But I, I do agree with you, Carol, on the room size, it just, it just feels like it should be that way, instead of the long way.
Good.
I'm gonna, first of all, I'm gonna come to the play equipment, and you don't really have to show it. I'll, I'll put on my John McLaughlin hat, he donated the, he donated land as a, as a plaza, and I think we're talking about option two is the one that is really the plaza, right on the outside.
They're both the same.
They're both the same.
They're both the same on the plaza area.
Well, but the approach to it, the approach to the atrium, I think, is, it is...
Oh yeah, that's true, yes.
That, that, that gives you a, I think, a more of a plaza feeling in terms of access to the library than the other.
So the atrium is option one.
It's option one, okay.
But are you talking about the one that has the long gla- the two-story glass piece?
Or the heavy base.
Can we, can we get those up on the screen?
Yeah, it's gonna blow down, yeah, that's right.
I'm afraid it'll...
Because it's hard when you go back and forth sometimes, it gets confusing.
I know, and it gets, so that's option one, right here with the, you're saying the crown, the floating windows, and the heavier base. And then, option two.
No, stop here, this is option...
One.
Okay, I, I think I'm still talking about option one.
Okay.
Okay.
That, that, that direct access to that atrium off of this option, I think, has more of a plaza feeling than, than the other option does.
I see what you're saying, so, from the, you're talking about the front doors?
Yes. Come off, yeah, coming off of...
Yeah, there's two.
Yeah.
See, yeah.
I, I mean, I, to me, yeah, go back to one again.
Okay.
Is this like being at the eye doctor, and it's...
Yeah, that's right.
I can't tell the difference, A or B.
I just think one is, one is better.
More classy.
And I agree with what you're saying, because it does feel more like a plaza, because it's almost like you have that L, because you have the brick, and so the way it converges together, it, yes.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Is that what you mean?
Yeah. The other, the other, the other thing, yeah, the other thing is the moving of the play equipment. I, the only concern I have, I mean, if we can't keep the old, uh, play equipment with, with the, with the transfer, we can't keep it. The only, the only concern I have, and, you know, I go, it's not used, I all, I'll go back to my elementary school, was Kellogg. With the exception of having those flatboard, uh, seats on swings, which were dangerous, that's all we have here. But, but the basic nature of those swings, is something was consistent with the early part of the last century. And, uh, and so, my concern is that, that that, that that, uh, if you're putting in new, new equipment, that that new equipment looks like it fits, it, it goes with what you see at the beginning of the last century. And I see that, I see that in some of the old parks there in Seaside, or in the Seaside last couple of evenings, nights, and any place I see those, I say, you know, that fits here, what you do in the Tots Park, what we see you've done in, in play equipment at other parts, parks won't look right here. And that's my major concern.
That's a great point, I think that's something we can look at, in terms of something that is more in kind with what's there now.
Yeah.
You know, simpler...
Not all the plastic.
Yeah, not all the gizmos and gadgets and all that kind of thing.
Because you can find that anywhere.
Creating a company that makes...
I got a couple of points we have that haven't been brought up, and if we can look at the picture, looking down at the floor plans, again.
Okay, which option do you...
Uh, it, it, I'm, the Carnegie's, you know, my concern there, so it doesn't matter which option you're doing. Okay, I've got pretty much a feeling how this looks, because it looks like the, going into, the fireplace will be in place, still, and so, the way I'm entering the current reference area and so forth, that's the opening we see, and the elevators will remain intact.
That's correct.
Right.
Okay, what, my only comment is that, that Vancouver, Vancouver Library had internet services at various places throughout, and I think that's possible here, that the community room, we have some internet possibilities, team, they can get internet. The point is, we went into there, everything's being used, I think almost every internet station. Regardless of where it was in the building, uh, was being used, and as long as we're talking about, you know, this is a central point where maybe this is the reference internet area, where I mean, this is where people are looking up stuff and so forth. The internet, of course, is gonna be used by kids for other purposes and so forth, as long as we're visualizing that intersta- internet stations are not going to be confined to this spot.
No, they're kind of sprinkled throughout, I mean, they're in children's here, and...
You know, I was making a crack over the phone one day, because we heard it on different occasions, dinos- you know, libraries are dinosaurs, so I made the crack to mo the, you know, libraries are dinosaurs, she says, yes, they are. Dinosaurs evolved, they became birds. And that the library is gonna do exactly the same thing, and, and, and like I say, these internet connections are gonna be extremely important to the new facility, and that, that's my point.
That's a great point, because I think all the way through the whole library, I mean, you really, you really need to think of these all as flexible spaces, and are capable of doing all the things that you're doing now, and want to do now, and who knows what in the future, but, you know, making them flexible.
There's, uh, I got a major point coming up, you know, I, I was glad you brought that new green area there on top of the library and so forth. I'm, I'm concerned about cost that we, that we keep, you know, we do the great things with budget, I don't know if we can do all of these things now. The thing is, can it be designed in such a way, the things we can't afford at this moment, can be brought in later on?
Well, we think we can do it all.
Okay, well, you can do it all.
We're pretty sure we can, everything you see, we can do.
But the, the, the green roof and everything? We can structure, we can structure for the green roof, that's...
That's my point, that's my point, I mean...
We can structure for solar, you mean?
Right, the point is, it may, may be that you can't bring in all the, uh, necessary equipment to go with what you want to do at this point in the game. My concern is that we keep, we keep, some of those things that we may not be able to fit into budget, but we think are great, let's make sure we design it in such a way that we can come back later and deal with it, and that's the only point I was coming to.
That makes sense, and it's always good to consider costs, too.
The other one, and, uh, if Kathy Roth were here, she'd probably bring it up, and I'm gonna bring it up, because just two or three weeks ago, NPR had a segment, you know, they've got, they got stations for seismic activities all the way along our plates and so forth, they're dead silent. And there is the major concern that those plates have locked up, the pressure's gonna continue to build, that we may have the big seismic event within our lifetime. And I don't know anything about glass structure or any of these things, I think in order to make us feel comfortable, and we have kind of the best seismic, I mean, one of, one of the things that Kathy was going for, the underground piece, and there was not, not one single member that, other member that was here. One of the major things she was looking at was for that kind of thing, and, uh, I, I think to make us all comfortable, we need to talk about that particular issue, because I, we're not prepared for it in many parts of this city, and I want to make sure that anything that we're doing new here, that we feel relatively comfortable that this is a public facility, for many, many reasons, I mean, if we have houses going down, we're gonna have, we're gonna have this area perhaps people sleeping in it, I mean, we're, we're gonna be taking a lot of our public facilities, and they're gonna be converted to sleeping spaces. I want to make sure that anything new we're building can be used in case of emergencies for these, for these kinds of things, things really critical.
Excellent, well, you know, from a seismic standpoint, and that's one of the things we talked about with the existing building, is that it's partially seismically brought up to speed, and so as part of our study is, what would it take to get it fully up to speed, and decide if that's, and, and that's one of the items that may or may not be in the budget, we don't know yet, because that wasn't something that was initially thought about. But the new part will be absolutely, it's designed for seismic zone four, which is the highest seismic zone that there is. The other part that I think you really got going for you here is that we're, and part of the building can be sitting on bedrock. And so, if I was in town and there was a big event, I would hope that I'm sitting in the new addition.
Yes, yes.
Exactly.
At the library, we're all sleeping on your boats.
If you can't meet those kinds of things, at the end of the game, on the Carnegie, for instance, say what needs to be done. My guess is, is these things, we're starting, we're probably gonna see grand money come in to deal with more of the seismic issues on old structures. So if you can tell us what would need to be done, if we can't do it to, to get that there, so if we can have to go to some more money to deal with the Carnegie's piece, then we'll, we'll know what to, we'll know exactly what to ask for, we're ahead of the game.
So that was our strategy, is we were going to look and, and see what it would take to bring it up to the same seismic code that the addition part would be. And then we'll have a number for that, and can share that with you.
We've been holding off a little bit, just to make, you know, once we decide how it's connecting, or actually how it's, it's adjoining, it's not really connecting, it'll have to be completely separate structure.
So while we're talk- while we're talking about costs, which is really important, um, is there any, uh, difference between the option one and option two as far as cost, between the brick, more the brick and more the glass?
You know, we're...
Is it pretty much a wash?
We think it's a wash at this point, I mean, I don't have a strong enough feeling one way or another, that I would say, gosh, you're gonna spend more with one or two. I think, you know, pick, pick what you like, and we'll figure it out.
Yeah, we did a quick analysis, just kind of usable square footage, because option two looks like it's a little, like, has more two-story space, but it really doesn't have any less usable space than option one, so they're, they're all pretty...
So we've been treating the plans as, essentially, we're gonna get the same spaces, same amount of square footage, all of that, um, either direction.
Great, thank you.
Good, are we, I got a feeling we actually have a preference.
My preference is one.
Minus two.
Yeah, minus two.
Very strongly.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Sounds like, is that a, lots of consensus.
Well, Karen's not here.
Well, I mean, of those present.
You've done a great job.
Oh, well, appreciate it. This has been, I think, I would, I was telling Mo, it's one, been one of the more, I think, involved processes that we've been through, and very productive.
Yeah.
Because I feel like people now go, okay, I get why you're doing it. And whether you agree or disagree, okay, you know, we get it. So, I think that's been super impressive, and, you know?
That's great.
We were, yeah, we, I think with HRB, we said we, we wanted to come with two schemes that you couldn't choose one from the other, so, kind of, kind of got me.
Yeah, I'm a little disappointed, I thought you may have a commemorative coin that you bring out for, you know, such times.
Yeah, and all the community outreach that was done, and Mo, you've done a great job.
Thank you very much.
Having all the drawings and everything available throughout the process in the library itself, and just...
They're there right now, so take a peek.
That's great, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. It's been really fun.
So, well, so, we're hearing option one? Favorable on option one?
Strong preference.
Strong preference, okay, strong preference.
Very strong.
Because our intent would be, we'd like to move forward with something that you would be agreeable with, obviously. So, because I think we officially come back January twenty...
I can't hear you.
Second, twenty-third, something like that?
Third Wednesday in January.
Yeah.
So, what, you're, we're coming back on the work session.
The thirteen.
Oh, the second Tuesday.
Thirteen, so that we can make sure everybody's up to speed, and then we'll have done some work by then as well. And then, we'll be back on the twenty-first to actually get approval to move into the review phase.
You can have all my approval on that day.
I've got your vote, awesome.
Absolutely.
My guess is Betty and I will be in the audience.
Sitting out there. We'll be heckling you like those guys do back there.
I'm very pleased to see you from our, from our building committee, library board here, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have one more question. So, what if the library board loves option two and hates option one?
Oh, yes.
I like for the reasons...
I want just one, I just want your response.
You have to have...
I can twist it on.
I think you just need to, it was a strong consensus for option one. I think that's what you gotta indicate.
That's what you just have to say. And they'll go with option one.
You know, I don't think they're, we had, we had a different option one, option two at a different point, and actually, that, at that point, the wraparound and so forth, library boards wanted, were interested in the second, the wraparound piece.
Yes.
We, we were not, and it was almost unanimous consensus on that. Did they have any, did they have any gastric problems when that happened?
They don't share those with me. It's more into secrecy, one or the other.
We don't need to worry about it.
Well, as always...
Did you, the building had any, had any gastric problems?
It was a little bit more than the gastric, I would say.
But, but the point is, I, 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 I think, you know, I don't, other than, yes, there might be some pers, you know, dealing with personnel management and so forth, and, and this one board, you didn't seem to worry about that.
Yeah, not worried about that.
And so, I think that fact, I think, allied any of the concerns that we had in choosing option one.
But, as always, I mean, our, our boards and committees are so important, so I'd like to hear exactly the reasons why, though, if there's a difference.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Great.
Because we do kind of plan to move forward with one scheme after we meet with HRB on the fifteenth, otherwise, we can't make the January twenty-third submittal deadlines for historic review and site design.
Yeah, at this point, I mean, that's, that's the goal, to get down to one, and then fully develop that one.
My, my guess is, the historic review board will be interested in the same things we were interested in, in having the Carnegie focal point, and that has happened here in option one.
I would say that maybe we should, because when I say number one, I'm also saying that with the discussion, we kind of talked about a kind of, you know, kind of seeing parts of the, the number two concept incorporated in it in some way. So, so it's, it's a hybrid sort of, but, so, but I don't know if that's the same as the rest of the commission. So, I, I, I feel the, the, definitely that view right there, which is very similar to the one that we all started with as a commission, I think, is, is one that really, really is powerful. But I agree that when you go inside, being able to see that a little bit more open than what the atrium view necessarily did inside, I think, you know, so that could be addressed a little bit, I think was probably, you know, so that way, if there was individuals or groups in the city, that kind of could bring us closer together by, you know, kind of opening that piece up. I think that's, I think that's the main difference of the two, in, in my mind. The floor plan, I think, we all talked about, I like better in option one. And I'm not a big fan of those, the balconies, yeah. But I like that idea of going in there and seeing this all open, not only just the back of the Carnegie open, but this kind of elevated.
Yeah.
And that is definitely part of number two. I think the part of number two I don't like is just the stark, square glass. I mean, it, 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 it contrasts with the Carnegie, and in some ways, you know, people would say, well, you wanna contrast it...
It's the strength of the contrast, that's right.
Yeah, you wanna, some people would say, you wanna contrast it with the existing building, and, you know, we talk about that both ways, but it's so stark when you look at it. It, it, to me, just doesn't feel right. It just feels very industrial, and, and I think, you know, toning down that really is a classier feel that honors the Carnegie, I think, very much.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it adds more of weight.
I think probably of, of looking at the options in terms of us moving forward, it's more and more of the decision about the outside, because the inside, they're really not that different. I mean, we can, we can tinker with those and, you know, work on additional space, but I think it's the feedback on the outside, because if one is it, then that's what we need to move forward with.
I think that's what, that's what my comment was gonna be, was...
Sounds great.
It's the outside, because the inside, you guys are gonna be able to work.
And there are the sites the same, the insides are, you know, by the time we get developed, it's gonna be similar and all that. So, I think it's, it's more of how you feel about it from the outside.
Yep.
And we're hearing one, and that's what we're gonna get working on.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And thank you to the members of our library board, too, being here, thank you.
Yeah, and if they have concerns, bring it back.
Yes, definitely.
After January one, right?
Sure.
When, when these two are gone.
We'll be out there heckling you.
I'm sure you will.
I, I can guarantee it.
We chose option one. After my reports, Mayor.
Yes, you actually love your reports.
Okay. So, first of all, it's all about you. You guys have, our commission members that are leaving us have an open house, and you know where and when that is. And that is, it's going to be a library presentation, it's a celebration, actually, at five thirty for special, and then special recognition of mayor commissioners for their service here at six. And that will be...
To be there, right, DA?
Wednesday, December seventeenth. Or, I'm sorry, no.
Yep.
Yes, Wednesday, December seventeenth, from five to six thirty, here in the chambers.
Thank you.
And then, also, this afternoon, I received a call from a gentleman named Greg Geist, who is the new, is he the second or third interim director at West in the last several months?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
He, so he's going to be their new interim director while they continue searching for director, director, permanent one. And I think he's also gonna be a candidate for that. He seemed like a very thoughtful person. He, he, he and I had a brief conversation, there's a tri-city advisory committee meeting Thursday. You will recall probably from the last report I made to you on their budget proposal, when they explained that they were having ten percent rate increases so that they could be more creditworthy later, even though the increase, the, the amount of revenues they had exceeded their expenses last year, they still had a ten percent rating, rate increase, and that was to, to get themselves in a strong credit position so they could borrow money later for some expansions. And I was told also that there was significant capacity left at the plant, but that over time, they were gonna have to make some additions. Oregon City has been growing, but our neighbors in Gladstone and West Lynn, much less so. So, what I was told today on the phone is that at the meeting, we're gonna get a lot more details. I didn't get, there wasn't a lot of detail, but I, I'm expecting maybe an email that explains a little bit more of it. We're only two days away from the meeting, so obviously, these meetings would be more productive if we had some written materials, you know, a little bit sooner. But I drilled down some in the conversation and found that, that projected ten percent a year increases that we were looking at for the next ten to fifteen years, based on what they presented last budget cycle, the numbers he was talking about were closer to twenty and thirty percent. So, I'll know more after I go to the meeting, and I will bring back what they give me.
Twenty or thirty percent for tri-city sewers?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
And, and I don't know anything about the capital need. I know that we have had a few building permits issued, but I don't think enough to justify probably that. I'm not aware of any moratoriums like you had to face with your sewer collection system. So, I just, I just don't know very much about what they're planning there, but I know that we, as a city, are concerned, and Mayor-elect Holliday and I are going to be meeting with other city officials, too, about this in the tri-city group, to see if, I think everybody's gonna have some big concerns about those kinds of increases when we don't have a whole lot that justifies it. So, you know, I've got my mind, my ears open.
So, I, I wanna have a clear understanding. What is it that they need this rate increase for, if they already have a pot of gold at the...
Well, what I was told today is that there's some digesters at the plant that, and they're trying to keep up with demand. But keep in mind, and this is the complexity, and one of the things I mentioned to them, it's gonna have to be crystal clear to the three cities that make up tri-cities, is what portion of this growth, because, you know, we know how much Gladstone is growing, not. We know how much West Lynn is growing, not very much. And we know how much we're growing, we actually have those numbers.
And we had, we had plenty of capacity before...
Well, that's what we were told all those years. I mean, for four years, I've been told we have plenty of...
This is growth beyond us.
Yeah, and so, CCSD one, which is also controlled by the Board of County Commissioners, you know, it's a couple of different hats that they have to wear, they have a lot of growth demand, I know, in unincorporated Clackamas County, in the Sunrise Corridor, Happy Valley, some of those areas, there's significant, significant growth numbers that exceed ours by some measure. So, there could be pressure coming from there, and I don't know which portions of this go to CCSD one, which portions of it are tri-city, that I'm, like you, are gonna be concerned about not having our residents pay for things that aren't growing here, but are growing somewhere else.
Yes.
I don't think our citizens have to pay for unincorporated or Happy Valley.
And, and as you recall before, the mayor has written letters, and I've taken them up there, and you've weighed in a few times and given your opinions when the former director was here about these rate increases. You've expressed those to county commissioners. I don't know what kind of process they're contemplating, if they're gonna, you know, to me, something that significant maybe should be paid for with rates if it's justified, but it probably ought to be taken to the voters.
It better be.
At, at a minimum, taken to the cities and ask the cities if there's a resolution of support from their commissions, which means there's an awful lot of sales work, to me, that has to happen.
Yeah.
We, we have that kind of feedback here on our moratorium, and it took us months to get through that, because we had to be convinced that the, these were the only alternatives, and we had to justify it, explain it, make sure the business community understood it. So, I think if you're gonna have really any, even the ten percent rate increases, in my view, need to be explained, because you're still looking at rate increases that are three and four times inflation at that level.
It's crazy.
Our, generally, people are fine with the three percent increase, because, you know, inflation does go up, and everything goes up, and you have to pay for pipes and streets, and, you know, it's...
And there may be, again, there may be a, a good explanation. I don't know what it's gonna be, but I'm gonna bring back all the information I get, and I think it's gonna be important for the cities to communicate with the chamber and the business alliance and others in the community that are interested in this, as well as our residents. And I think the tri-city, if they want to have those kinds of increases, is gonna, are gonna have some major education and explaining, and looking at all the alternatives, and making sure that the costs for whatever expansions are apportioned where they're actually the demand is. That's another big concern, and it's been challenging, you know, because we don't have any of our elected officials on that board, so it's...